February 9th, 2021, I call this village board meeting order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Zarnik.
Here.
Trustee Feiter.
Here.
Trustee Frankie.
Here.
Trustee Listner.
Here.
Trustee Prochnow.
Here.
Trustee Schmidt.
Here.
Everyone is present tonight. We have some people here. We've got some swearing ends we'll be doing in a few minutes. But to get started, we're going to do the pledge allegiance and the invocation. Tonight, we have the invocation from Pastor Tab from the Prince of Peace United Methodist Church. Whoever, please rise. Pastor, if you'd go down, please.
Good evening, Mayor Johnson, village trustees, and all in attendance. Will you please bow your head as I pray? Let us pray. Dear wise and loving God, first let me say thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here today. Thank you for your many and abundant blessings. In the scriptures, you have said that citizens ought to obey the governing authorities since you have established those very authorities to promote peace and order and justice. Therefore, I pray for our mayor, for the various levels of village officials, and in particular for this assembled board. Glorious God, you promised to open doors of blessing and abundance for your people. We ask that you would work mightily in us today. Come upon us and cause us to have a productive meeting. God, as we begin this meeting, we ask that you would guide our thoughts and our actions so that we might have a successful meeting on today. We thank you, oh God, for the opportunity to come and gather safely on this day, even in the midst of a pandemic. So, God, we ask for thy hand of blessing on this meeting. And lastly, we pray for the agenda set before this august body this evening. Oh God, please give us an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around this exceptional community called Elk Grove Village. We ask all these things. In your most blessed name, I pray. Amen.
Amen. The flags to my right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. Pastor, thank you very much for coming tonight. I never let you leave without something. So, here we have some special village chocolate logos.
Thank you.
Enjoy.
Thank you so much.
And thank you for being here tonight, and thank you for all you pro.
Thank you for inviting me.
Take care. Thank you. We move on now to the approval of the minutes of January 26th, 2021.
I move we accept the minutes of January 26th, 2021, and dispense with the reading.
Second.
Remotion by trustee Zarnik and second by trustee Listner. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Let the record show you now. It's approval. Move on now to the mayor, board of trustees report tonight. A few items before we do our swearing ends. Back on January 28th, I got a chance to meet with Rotarians, talk about hopefully having the Rotary Fest this year that comes up in June. Yeah, I mean, we're still working as if they think they're going to have it with the inoculations coming out, hopefully quicker, and all the rest coming up soon that we can get enough people inoculated that we can move on to normal events, Rotary Fest or concerts. So, we're still working as if it's going to happen. On February 4th, myself, Mr. Rumel, and other staff members had a chance to meet with the new president at Harper College, Dr. Avis via electronic Zoom, whatever you call that stuff. So, we had a chance to talk about things that we want to work together on, work especially with Harper, as we do with Oak Grove High School, to get training for people in the new industrial age that's going on. And we appreciate her meeting with us and look forward to working more with her. I know Josh and Nick are going to be coordinating with some of her staff about more things could be done. On February 6th, we had coffee with the board. Actually, a very nice turnout. Ellen, he covered for you very well. He did a good job. So, but it went well. We appreciate people stopping by. We're very careful, social distance and masks. And we had a chance to talk about a lot of items with a lot of people that showed up. Also, a couple of other things going on I'd like to touch on briefly here. First off, this Saturday, which would be the 13th, NBC is having an international track meet taking place from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. on Channel 5, NBC channel here. And Elk Grove is one of the lead sponsors. Part of our sponsorship with teams, USA teams preparing for the Olympics include track and field, triathlon, and USA wrestling. So, as these athletes prepare for the Olympic Games in Tokyo this July and August, this is part of our sponsorship. And this worked out very well. We're excited about it. And we're unveiling one of our new commercials that's going to be coming up tonight that you'll be seeing this Saturday as you watch it.
In Elk Grove Village, we're beyond business friendly. As home to North America's largest industrial park, we're committed to helping businesses grow because we all win when local businesses succeed. It's why we're proud to sponsor USA Track and Field. Because together, we're all chasing one thing, the American dream. Elk Grove Village, makers wanted.
So, that will be our commercial. We're going to be unveiling nationally on that date. Nice thing about that commercial, it's flexible for us. We can take out the track and field, put in wrestlers, take out wrestlers, put on triathletes. So, we can use it in multiple ways depending on which one we're highlighting at that time. And we'll have another new commercial come up in the near future. Remember, besides being on national track and field and national TV, we also will be marketing and televising commercials on news channels. We're going to be unveiling pretty soon a sports team that we're getting behind, local professional sports teams. So, we're really getting the word out about Elk Grove in different ways, once again, to get our name front and center throughout not just the region, but also the world. So, we're excited about that. And not just commercials, you'll see Elk Grove's logo on the track, on the infield of the track. You'll see us as the one of the main sponsors before and afterwards of the upcoming events. So, we're looking forward to good returns, and that doing very well. Another thing, I know people have seen the newspaper articles, you know, they've passed new laws about, and along about, you know, what the police officers, you know, have to do overseeing that. And one of the big things they're pushing is by 2025, they want all police officers to wear body cameras. We're not waiting until 2025. We got a new phone system, and we're coming in this year. We're looking at next year, chief? We're looking at next year, 2022, our officers wearing body cameras. And officers are not against it. They like it because our officers do a phenomenal job. And they've got nothing to hide. They're more than proud to show how they do their job well. And so, we will have body cameras in 2022 here in Elk Grove. We're not waiting until 2025. So, again, we are clear certified. We're the most advanced, highly recognized police department in the country. And again, we're ahead of the curve, not behind the curve trying to catch up. So, chief, I commend you and your guys for doing that. And a matter of fact, why I'm got this, let me talk about how our police are. Here's an example. We got a letter the other day, chief, which I know you, we actually received it out of coffee, and it was passed on by Sergeant McIntyre to you from a family here. Dear Chief Walsh, let me first start by saying I'm not good at writing letters, but felt the need to share this with you. On Thursday, February 4th, around 4:00 p.m. at the start of the snowfall, we had a pretty good snowfall that day, my husband and I were driving down Tawney Road where we were involved in a pretty bad accident, I think right by Oak Grove Boulevard. And it was bad enough that tow trucks were needed to be called to the scene. The reason for this letter is to let you know how every one of your officers that were there on the scene were absolutely wonderful in helping us. From the falling snow while out there making the area safe for oncoming traffic after the accident. We understand they were just doing their job, but wanted to share with you the exceptional job they did. Please pass this on to all of them, our appreciation for going above and beyond for us. Thank you. Stay safe and God bless. I won't say the names, which I don't. But we got these before I read them. So, chief, again, your guys, well respected, well appreciated. I've said this a thousand times and keep saying, in Elk Grove, we support the blue. We'll never defund the blue. We back our blue 120%. And it's not just them. I got several calls from people, cold weather we've had, below zero at night. We had a water main break. Kobe, water main break not long ago, I think about 2:00 in the morning, 2:30 in the morning. And the residents could not believe, five below zero, our guys are out there for a couple hours fixing that water main. So, when those folks got up the next morning, they could take the shower, make the coffee, go to the bathroom, whatever they had to do. That's our guys. That's how they do it. Tonight, we're swearing in new firefighters. And I've had several people say how impressed they were when they had relatives that had to be transported because of COVID, how our guys came, the firemen came, they had the special ambulances, how they took care of them, cared for them, no hesitation, got them over to Lexan Brothers, safe, efficient manner. I'm telling you, folks, we got absolutely phenomenal people working for this village. And again, I can't say enough. That's why I bring it up whenever I can. We get these letters. And, you know, I say this all the time and keep saying, don't read Facebook. You got people on there just trying to tear things down. This is facts. This is what our people are doing. And chiefs, Kobe, and Ray, all of our staff, again, I say it all the time and keep saying, thank them. Doing a great job, and God bless for the work they're doing for us. So, thank you again on that. Also, one, appreciate, a lot of people can get into water bill credits, and appreciate that. Real quickly, another person said, dear, and this is one of the reasons people say, why do we do this stuff? You know, you may be doing well, which is great, and I'm glad for you, but not everyone's doing well. Dear Mayor Johnson and Board of Trustees, this notice to say thank you very much for the $200 coronavirus economic relief check. It's a credit on your water bill. It's certainly welcome and much appreciated gift. I, as well as many others, am temporarily laid off, hopefully. Unemployed after 41 years as an operating room nurse. It appears COVID-19 is here for a long haul. All we can do is follow the safety directions for ourselves and each other. Thank you. Again, I won't mention names. But, you know, you think, well, a nurse, remember, during the pandemic, they stopped almost all elective surgeries. These nurses were not needed at the time. So, here's a 41-year nurse, still looking, waiting to get back. But again, that little help we gave, how much they appreciate it. I saw that talking to people over the fall. People just appreciate, they don't realize their neighbor's been out of work, their family member, someone else. So, we all still got to pitch in. Coronavirus is still here. We're making big strides. We're still here. So, help your neighbor. Take care of him. Reach out if they need it. And if you need help, don't hesitate to reach out to your neighbor for help. In Elk Grove, we help each other all the time. Also, I want to do a big thank you. As we're going through this time, we're having businesses come to Elk Grove. Tonight, on a consentogen, there's someone here for Skybox, which is a big data center. We're buying a piece of property, working with Prologis on that. We're going to do a 6B for them. But to show you how important this is for this village. Skybox is going to invest almost $14 million in the building they bought. It's about 200,000 square feet. It's an older building. $14 million they're going to be investing in that location. And that is to make the building available for their data center, cloud service they provide. That's great for Elk Grove. It's jobs for the work they're going to be doing. It's jobs for the workers when they open and operate, and it takes a building that was vacant and gets usable in today's needs. So, we want to thank both Skybox and Prologis, along with many other businesses that come to Elk Grove. And this just shows, where's Matt? We just got rated the number two, the Chicago area is the number two location in the world for data centers, cloud service. Elk Grove's the number one market in the Chicagoland area. We're right there. That's why Microsoft came. Now, Skybox, others are coming to Elk Grove. Stream are the ones we've talked about. So, we are the place to be for new technology and advances that go on. Next, saving money. We're always looking to save money. Remember, three months ago, we passed a contract with Aquify. They're a company that monitors our water lines in case there's leaks, problems like that. Well, they found a leak recently, and it was one that's by our sewer lines, all this, which wouldn't have been detected for a long time until we probably had a drought, and all of a sudden, the lines are getting filled with this water. That water leak was costing the village $2,300 a day. And that could have gone on for months and months. But Aquify found it. Kobe's guys were able to detect, it gives a location where it's at, a close region. Our guys went out with their expertise, found it. It's been fixed. We're not known a long time. Matter of fact, Aquify, we've already identified, has saved the village almost $400,000 in leaks in the first year alone, $400,000. The system costs us about $50,000 a year to use. We've already got eight-time return on it. That was good technology. That's good use on our behalf. So, Kobe, you and staff, thank you for recommending that. We're glad we did it. We're going to continue to use the latest technology, help save money for our community. Also, we would like to thank this community. When I say that, myself as mayor, trustee Frankie, trustee Feiter, and trustee Prochnow. We all filed for reelection as of last Thursday. No one filed to run against us. No one filed as a writing candidate. So, the four of us will be reelected on April 6th. As we've talked about before, this board's worked together for a long time, we've done a lot of good. And we thank the community for the support they show us and for being with us as we move forward. I've said this recently several times over a few years, this board's changing. And we had a change when trustee Schmidt came on board, when trustee Petry stepped, you know, didn't run again. There's going to be several changes coming in the near future, next couple of years and beyond from this board. We've had a great run here. We've done a lot of good. We've got some things we want to finish up here. Part of this 2025 plan, a road project we'll be announcing soon, water issues, we're going to be taken care of. But, you know, there's going to be changes coming. So, we're excited. Tonight, we're going to swear someone in on a zoning board. We got people starting to come in, serve this community, and we look forward to these people stepping up even further as time goes on. But on behalf of trustee Prochnow, trustee Feiter, and trustee Frankie, we thank this community for the faith they have in us. And we'll promise as we have and continue to do not to let everyone down. So, with that said, how was that, Mr. Frankie?
I think you did pretty well.
Thank you. We've got some swearing ends, so I'm going to ask, if I could, Tony Damps, if he would come down and join me at the microphone. As we talk about a lot here in the community, it's not just the seven of us sitting up here. We, on the very peripheral, what gets this village done is, I talked earlier about, is our staff, our police, fire, public works, administration staff, all of them, they do it. But also, the young son heroes of this village are the people that serve on our boards and commissions. We've got people that serve on zoning board, well, we're pointing Tony to tonight, plant commission, the parade commission. Where's Nancy? Nancy works hard. The parade commission, the youth committee, and many other committees that serve Elk Grove. These are residents, like all of us, that volunteer their time, put in a lot of hours to make this a better community. One, which is sitting back there, on the police and fire commission, they, every fireman, policeman you see in this village goes through their commission. They interview them. They test them. They interview them again. They have to appoint. They have to rank and all that. That's a lot of work, a lot of time, hours and hours, evenings and weekends they give. Without these people, we wouldn't have the community we're so proud of here in Elk Grove. So, first off, Tony's going to be coming on the zoning board of appeals tonight. We're going to be swearing him in. And Tony, we thank you. We thank his family who's out there because they give up time being with them in order to serve the community. So, we thank them. It's harder on them sometimes than it'll be on them. But tonight, so Tony, if you'd raise your right hand, repeat after me. Aye. State your name.
Aye, Tony Damps.
Have been appointed to the position of?
Have been appointed to the position of?
Zoning board of appeals.
Zoning board of appeals.
In the village of Elk Grove Village.
In the village of Elk Grove Village.
In the counties of Cook and DuPage.
In the counties of Cook and DuPage.
I solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
That I support the Constitution of the United States.
That I support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I faithfully discharge?
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of?
The duties of the office of?
Zoning board of appeal?
Zoning board of appeal.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, buddy. Tony, if you would, would you want to introduce family members here or anybody you want to?
My wife Kathy's here tonight with me, my daughter Melissa, and you heard my grandson Colin. I believe he's with his dad, Chris, running around somewhere. First off, I'd just like to say thank you very much, Craig, mayor, and also happy birthday.
Oh, thank you.
Trustees, I really appreciate all the support you've given me over the years, and I will continue to do a good job for all of you. Thank you.
I look forward to it, buddy. Thank you. Before you go, we'll get your little grandson a little bit of a sugar high.
Yeah, I'm sure that's what he needs right now.
For the rest of the family.
Thank you.
Enjoy, buddy.
Thank you. Happy birthday.
Thank you. Okay, chief Michael, if you come on down, our fire chief. We got some officers. We're going to swear in new firefighters, and we got some promotions tonight. So, chief, all yours.
Thank you, mayor. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for having us here this evening. We appreciate this very much. On behalf of the fire department, we extend our appreciation to the board of trustees and the mayor for allowing us to move forward with these positions and promotions. It's greatly appreciated. We also extend our thanks to the board of police and fire commissioners for the work that they put in. As the mayor mentioned, I know this afternoon, there was a board meeting with the police and fire commission. They've had interviews after that. It's been a long day for Commissioner Urki, but we appreciate you being here. So, thank you very much. We've got three new firefighters who will receive their oath of office this evening, and then one new lieutenant and one new battalion chief. These folks have been promoted and hired at various times over the last several months. We brought them together here for one event this evening so we could take care of all of their oaths at one time. So, we're happy to do that. We also have one other firefighter to be sworn in, but he's not available to be with us tonight, so we'll get him another time. So, first, if you would please, firefighter paramedic Josh Trump, if you would please. Firefighter paramedic Josh Trump was born at Lexian Brothers Hospital here in Elk Grove, attended Elk Grove Junior High and Elk Grove High School. During that time, he earned the rank of Eagle Scout, which is a very distinguished achievement, and has proven to be successful for other people who have achieved that rank as for their future success, indicative of future success. So, that says a lot about a person when you reach the rank of Eagle Scout. He also participated in the Naperville Fire Department Explorer Program, another very good program to help develop people for careers in the fire service. He's proud of that. Like so many other wonderful and talented individuals, Josh attained, attended Southern Illinois University where he received a bachelor's degree in public safety. So, that's wonderful.
Hang on, hang on.
That's right.
Okay, good thing.
Right. And we are Salukis. Thank you. There you go. So, we appreciate that, and again.
It's a car.
A car. After coming out of high school and attending these other training sessions, when we hired Josh here, he attended the Romeoville Fire Academy where he graduated number one in his class. So, the number one recruit in the, number one recruit in the academy, otherwise known as a class valedictorian. Once again, indicative of the quality of people we're hiring here and indicative of where he's going in the future with success. So, we're very pleased to talk about that, even though he does not appreciate the fact when we bring that up on occasion. So, we want to mention it anyway. Josh previously worked with Superior Ambulance, an American ambulance, during his accreditation time as a paramedic. And in his free time, he enjoys being active outdoors and is an avid bicyclist. So, it's my pleasure to introduce this evening firefighter, paramedic Josh Trump.
Chief, you forgot one thing.
What's that, sir?
When he was at Oak Grove High School, he spent one year in a sport that obviously means he's going to be the cap or the chief very soon. And that sport would be what, Josh?
Wrestling, Mr. Mr.
That's right, wrestling. And who was the head coach at that time?
You were, sir.
That's right. Got a great future ahead of him, no question. So, chief, I'm sorry, firefighter Trump, if you raise your hand, right hand, repeat after me. Aye. State your name.
Aye, Josh Trump.
Have been appointed to the position of?
Have been appointed to the position of?
Firefighter.
Firefighter.
In the village of Elk Grove Village.
In the village of Elk Grove Village.
In the counties of Cook and DuPage.
In the counties of Cook and DuPage.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
I support the Constitution of the United States.
I support the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the State of Illinois.
Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I faithfully discharge?
And I faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of?
The duties of the office of?
Firefighter.
Firefighter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, buddy. Josh has a proud mama sitting out there. His mother is our finance director here in Elk Grove. So, it's, she can keep an eye on you too. Plus, she knows all the money you make, so she'll really keep an eye on you. But Josh, I know it mentions here that you're a cyclist. Josh used to race bicycles, and he used to train sometimes back during the tour of Elk Grove time going on. So, Josh, we're glad to have you. Why don't you come up and introduce who we got here tonight and say a few words if you want to?
Thank you.
Tonight in the audience is my mother, Christine, my younger brother, Matthew, my girlfriend Natalie, and her parents, Jack and Margaret.
27 pages, okay.
Good evening, everybody. I'd like to start off by thanking the fire and police commission for allowing me to work for such a prestigious department. In addition, I would like to thank the board of trustees and Mayor Johnson for making Elk Grove what it is today. Working for such an amazing community with world-renowned concerts, fireworks displays, and festivals is truly a blessing. And let's not forget about the forever-growing Oktoberfest, which I am anxiously awaiting to attend this year.
Smart guy.
Being able to attend the village, being able to work for the village I was born and raised in is truly an honor. I graduated from Elk Grove High School in 2011, where I participated in marching band, orchestra, baseball, cheerleading, and how can we not forget wrestling? There is a faint memory of a coach who strongly encouraged his wrestlers to make their weight class where they would be running the stairs in a garbage bag until that scale read the appropriate weight. I went on to graduate from Southern Illinois University with a degree in public safety management. Currently, I'm working towards a master's in public safety and homeland security management. To finish up, I'd like to thank my family and my beautiful girlfriend Natalie for the continuous support throughout this experience. Through thick and thin, they have always supported my career choice, encouraging me to follow my dream. I cannot thank them enough. I'd like to thank you for your time, and I wish everyone the best of health as we battle through this pandemic together. Thank you.
There you go. Plenty of chocolates for you and everyone here. Did a good job. Thank you. And by the way, everyone always made their weight too, no problem. Congratulations.
Thank you, mayor.
Okay, chief.
Thank you. Again, congratulations. We're happy to have you, Josh. Thank you. And next, I'd like to introduce firefighter, paramedic Adam Mertes. Adam grew up in Hoffman Estates as the youngest of four brothers. He attended from high school in Palatine and continued on to earn a bachelor's degree at Illinois State University. And on behalf of my wife, I would have to say, go Redbirds for the Illinois State University. During his college time, he worked as a laborer for an asphalt road construction company, then started on his career path as an emergency medical technician for a private ambulance company. After learning, earning his paramedic license through St. Joseph Hospital in Elgin, Adam worked for the Palatine Rural Fire District for two and a half years prior to being hired here in Elk Grove Village. Adam married his wife Tiffany on Mackinac Island in Michigan with a small group of family members last year. They live in Fox River Grove with their two dogs, Wally and Scooby. And Tiffany is a bilingual elementary teacher in Palatine. Adam enjoys walks with the dogs and Tiffany, camping, relaxing, and watching movies or playing video games, and occasionally hunting. We're happy to have you here, Anthem. Adam, please welcome firefighter, paramedic Adam Mertes.
Before I swear in, what do you like to hunt?
Uh, feathers.
Feathers, okay. Any quail or?
Uh, haven't done that.
Okay. I used to hunt a lot too, so I don't have to read. Well, if you raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye. State your name.
Aye, Adam Mertes.
Have been appointed to the position of?
Have been appointed to the position of?
Firefighter.
Firefighter.
In the village of Elk Grove Village.
In the village of Elk Grove Village.
In the counties of Cook and DuPage.
In the counties of Cook and DuPage.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
I support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I will faithfully discharge?
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of?
The duties of the office of?
Firefighter.
Firefighter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, buddy. Come on up and introduce who you got here and give a few words if you want to.
Hi, I just want to thank the village for giving me this opportunity, and I promise to do the best that I can.
Okay, who do you got here?
This is my wife Tiffany, right here.
So bilingual, Spanish, English?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Well, thank you for doing that. Big help in schools nowadays. Thank you. Anything?
No, sir, thank you.
Ready to get started?
Yes.
Okay. Well, here's some Tiffany for you. Got some chocolate lobe for you. There you go.
Thank you. Just Tiffany for now. Everybody else is at home watching, scotching.
Thanks a lot. Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, next, it's my pleasure to introduce firefighter, paramedic Adam Schelmoser. Adam grew up in Palatine, where he currently lives with his parents and three sisters. He went to Palatine High School and graduated from Illinois State University. He previously worked for the Barrington Countryside Fire Protection District, and most recently for the Palatine Rural Fire Protection District. In his spare time, he enjoys working out, spending time with his dog Barney, and watching sports and movies. He's very excited to be joining the Elk Grove Village Fire Department and looks forward to interacting with the other members of the Elk Grove Village community. Please join me in welcoming firefighter, paramedic Adam Schelmoser.
Okay, any sports in high school?
I swam for a couple of years, played volleyball.
Okay. I guess that's sports. Anyways. Raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Adam Schelmoser.
Have been appointed to the position of?
Have been appointed to the position of?
Firefighter.
Firefighter.
In the village of Elk Grove Village.
In the village of Elk Grove Village.
In the counties of Cook and DuPage.
In the counties of Cook and DuPage.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
I support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the State of Illinois.
Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I will faithfully discharge?
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of?
The duties of the office of?
Firefighter.
Firefighter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, buddy. Do you want to introduce somebody tonight?
Hello, everyone. I've got my dad, John, my mom, Laura, and one of my sisters, Jennifer, here with me tonight. Amanda and Teresa are listening online. The other two sisters, just want to say thank you, all you always supporting me. I love you all, and I look forward to serving the members of this community.
Very good. Sisters, don't forget. Is someone home and all that? Plenty of chocolates for everyone.
Oh, all right.
There you go. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And good luck to you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, chief. Thank you, sir.
And next, it's my pleasure to introduce Fire Lieutenant Andy Laird. Andy grew up here in Elk Grove Village, graduated from the University of Arkansas with a bachelor's degree in education.
Hang on. Arkansas, that's easy.
There you go. All right. He joined the Elk Grove Village Fire Department in February of 2000 and has multiple certifications as a fire officer, paramedic, fire apparatus engineer, hazardous materials operations, structural collapse operations, fire service vehicle operator, machinery technician, and critical care paramedic from Johns Hopkins University in Baltimore. And we see that we've got a very well-rounded individual here promoting into a supervisory rank, which is key for the success of the department here. Andy has served as a paramedic preceptor, is the role where he teaches other new paramedics how to become field paramedics after they're done with school, and he's done that for about five years. He represents the Fire Department on the Provider-Based Performance Improvement Committee at Northwest Community Hospital, again stepping out of the normal routine here to work on behalf of the department with the paramedic system. He also participates in public education programs. Lieutenant Laird joined the water rescue team shortly after he was hired and currently serves as our water rescue team leader. He's certified as a dive rescue specialist, an ice diver. An ice diver is kind of a special certification, if you can imagine what that's like. If we have someone who falls through the ice somewhere and is unaccounted for, an ice diver is a person who's gonna go through that hole down underwater to find where that person might be missing. And if you think about a regular scuba diver, where you can surface anywhere in the water when there's a problem, when you're an ice diver in dark, you can only surface through the hole that you went into. So that navigation underwater is a very specific skill, and it's a very talented individual to take that on. He works as a swift water technician and ice rescue trainer. Andy's also a member of the statewide Mabus Water Rescue Team, and in that role, he was deployed as a team leader for eight days to Southern Illinois as part of the Mabus Illinois Flood Response Team for the Mississippi River flooding. For that assignment, he was presented with the Humanitarian Service Award from Mabus. So it's my pleasure this evening to introduce our newest fire lieutenant, Andy Laird.
Andy, raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Andy Laird.
Have been appointed to the position of?
Have been appointed to the position of?
Fire lieutenant.
Fire lieutenant.
In the village of Elk Grove Village.
In the village of Elk Grove Village.
In the counties of Cook and DuPage.
In the counties of Cook and DuPage.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
I support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the State of Illinois.
Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I will faithfully discharge?
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of?
The duties of the office of?
Fire lieutenant.
Fire lieutenant.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, buddy.
First of all, thank you for the opportunity to the mayor, the village board, and the administration staff of the village for giving me the opportunity. You support the Fire Department. You've given us excellent facilities, excellent equipment, and excellent rigs to work with. So thank you for that. Thank you to the chief, Chief Michael, Chief Nathan Gack, Chief John Lodewick, for their support and guidance in helping me get to this position. You guys offer career development by sending us to classes and everything like that, so I appreciate the help getting me there. I also want to say a special thank you to the guy that's coming in next, Battalion Chief Todd Rischling. He's, a tremendous gratitude is owed to him for helping me get to where I'm at. He's taken me out of my comfort zone many times, more than I can count, only to make me a better employee, better leader. Hopefully, he'll guide me in my ways. Special thank you to my mom for coming in town from Las Vegas, braving the cold weather so she could see my career accomplishment. And then to my family as well, my wife Shawna, my daughter Bryn, my son Tommy, my sister-in-law Let. So thank you for your support and guidance along the way. It's been a long road. Shawna, you know you're the glue that holds the family together. When I'm at work, at training, going to classes, you're the ones getting the kids to school, getting them to their activities, making sure the walls are still standing when I get home. So kids, I love you. You know, I miss your smiling faces. I'm at work a lot, so I look forward to the smiling faces when I come home and the hugs and kisses. So thank you.
Thank you. You proud of Dad? You should be. And I'm gonna make sure he's got a lot of chocolates for you because you give up a lot of time, and a few more even, and take care of it. But this is what we're talking about. They do all the work, but it's really the work of the family behind, especially the wives and everyone else that's there. So we thank the families for the support you give them because he's helping the village, but without your support, he couldn't help the village. So thank you very much. Congratulations. Get you out there.
Congratulations. Yeah? Thank you.
Emo, want to get a picture? Here, come step around here. Let's step around here. Come on here.
And this evening, our final oath of office tonight is for Battalion Chief Todd Rischling. Todd came to the Elk Grove Village Fire Department in 1988, or 1998, after starting as a paid-on-call firefighter in some rural areas of Illinois. Todd mentioned to us that one of the adjustments he had to have coming here to Elk Grove Village was that we actually had fire hydrants, where water would come up out of the ground, and we had buildings that were large enough to need ladders, and that was different from what he was accustomed to where he came from. So it took some adjustment on his part. Todd has experience working as a paramedic for a private contractor as well as a paramedic on a Flight for Life helicopter. It's a very special training and special certification that goes along with that. Only the most critical patients are transported by helicopter, and only the finest paramedics are chosen for that type of an assignment. So that tells you a lot about Todd and his paramedic skills. He was selected as the original team leader for the Cook County Swift Water Rescue Team and has led the Mabus Division One Water Rescue Team to a safe and prestigious position in the water rescue industry. He's been our team leader here since 2005. Battalion Chief Rischling has traveled around the country teaching water rescue, public safety diving, and emergency medical services courses, always while representing the Elk Grove Village Fire Department and the village with the highest standards of professionalism. He's worked in other areas of the department. Once again, we have a well-rounded individual here, where he's worked on the hazardous materials team, the technical rescue team, as well as the foreign fire board. According to Battalion Chief Rischling, one of his greatest accomplishments so far in Elk Grove Village here is when he was able to secure a ride for Mayor Johnson in the Flight for Life helicopter when the department received its Scene Call of the Year award in 2016. When that award was presented to the department, they actually landed a helicopter here in the parking lot, made the presentation, and the mayor was able to get a quick tour of the village in a helicopter. So thank you for making that happen. It's my pleasure now to introduce our Battalion Chief Todd Rischling. Thank you.
Don't forget that. Never will. Raise your right hand, repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Todd Rischling.
Have been appointed to the position of?
Have been appointed to the position of?
Battalion Chief.
Battalion Chief.
In the village of Elk Grove Village.
In the village of Elk Grove Village.
In the counties of Cook and DuPage.
In the counties of Cook and DuPage.
I support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the State of Illinois.
Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I will faithfully discharge?
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of?
The duties of the office of?
Battalion Chief.
Battalion Chief.
So help me God.
So help me God.
He was one of the early ones I swore in when I first became mayor, and I'm glad to see how well you've done. You've worked up the ranks, and that's for the newer guys. That's what you gotta look at. In Elk Grove, we're like family. We take care of each other, we stay together, and you all got the opportunity to work your way up through the ranks. Just hard work and dedication, you can do it, just like you did. You've done a great job. So please, talk a little bit and introduce your family.
Thank you. My wife Kendra and my son Chase are both here. My other son is in Florida at school, college, in Fort Myers. Apparently, he's doing something right. And my daughter's at her first freshman in high school football game, so... Or, sorry, basketball. She's tough enough to play football. Basketball. So thank you very, very much. So in 1998, when I was hired here, prior to that, I tested for many departments. And shortly after starting our testing processes for all these other departments, it was obvious that there's very few departments I truly wanted to work for, and this was certainly one of them. And I'm humbled, after all of these years, these opportunities, to take this opportunity to become a battalion chief. Servant leadership is truly what it's all about, taking care of our people, and that's what I intend to do. Thank you.
Great stuff. There you go. Don't worry, Dad's gonna come home with plenty for you. Got a hat right there for you.
Holy cow.
There you go. Let's go up and get a picture?
Absolutely.
Okay. Gotta make Emo work tonight.
I know. He may even put film in there.
Chief Andy, also want to add?
Well, that's all. I just once again say thank you, everybody, for attending here this evening to the family members. As the mayor and the candidates all said, you know, we can't do this without our families. So thank you all for the support you've given us. We greatly appreciate it. Have a good evening.
Hang on, Chief. Take these back to your guys up there. Where's your hat? There you go, buddy.
Perfect.
Thank you. Good job. Okay, as they get moving on, we'll move on to... Now, don't hold all the mayor's report. That's mine was, good job, right?
Yeah.
That's my part. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. We move on now to trustee's report. We'll start with trustee listener.
No report.
Trustee Zarnik.
Quickly, the applications for the Zarnik Heffren scholarships are online at zarnikgolf.com. And on the village website, there's eight $1,000 awards available this year to Elk Grove Village residents who will be graduating from high school. The applications must be received by April 23rd. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee Proctno.
Thank you. I just want to commend the village. I am so, so proud to be a resident of Elk Grove right now. We talk about this all winter long, about shoveling the sidewalks and helping our neighbors out and keeping the sidewalks and driveways clear for walkers and pet walkers and seniors. out and keeping the sidewalks and driveways clear for walkers and pet walkers and seniors, and you guys just did an outstanding job, outstanding. I don't... Since the last meeting, I've been out walking every day, and I'd say 90% of the sidewalks are cleared off. And especially, a big thank you to the people who live on the corners of the streets that have been taking the mayor's advice from the last meeting and shoveling out exits through the snow that's been piled up by the snowplows. So, it's been a great team effort. It's made things a lot safer and good in Elk Grove, and I thank you for that, for your efforts. And the only other thing I'd like to do is to wish trustee Fighter's birthday was Sunday, trustee Listener's birthday was last Wednesday, and today is Mayor Johnson's birthday. So, happy birthday to all of you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. No better place to spend your birthday than with the board. I enjoy it.
Aww.
That's all these years. So, thank you. Let's see, trustee Fighter.
Okay. The Community Character Coalition has been having a very difficult time, as so many other organizations have, trying to fulfill what they have done in the past, their goal, their mission. But they've come up with something this year, kind of unique, that they're going to be working on and doing. Every year, as you may remember, they've had a carnival over at the pavilion, and we've had up to 2,000 people come to that. And obviously, we can't do that this year. So, the organization has decided to have a virtual carnival. So, what we're gonna do is try to get large numbers of young people by advertising at their schools, like we always do, by using social media and a number of other ways, and try to get the... As many students as we can on March 19th, a Friday in the afternoon, to get on Zoom at their homes and watch a program that we're gonna put together for them. There'll be a number of things on it, not too much talk-talk stuff from us. It'll be mostly a magician that will be doing a bit of entertaining at the same time as he's trying to promote the various different pillars of character that the Community Character Coalition stands for. So, that's one way that they have found to try to do something for the young people of Elk Grove, since the pandemic has made it so hard. Another report I wanted to give is about the Meet Chicago Northwest, our tourist group. Whenever I've talked about them in recent months, it's all been kind of bad news. Finally, they got a little good news. They, of course, is our organization, and it's... Many suburbs around this area are part of it, that promote tourism, try to help our hotels, our restaurants, and they just received a PPP loan for $125,000. And the way that loan works is if you put 60% of it for salaries, then the loan is forgiven. So, it was good news. They need all the help they can get with the way they've had a struggle trying to help out the hotels and restaurants going through this really difficult time. And one last thing I wanted to mention, because I thought that this particularly struck me, probably because I'm a retired teacher, but I saw that a young woman at Elk Grove High School, a junior by the name of Sarah Wilch, participated in a contest, the Voice of Democracy Contest. And this has been around for a long time, because I remember this at my high school when I was teaching, all the years I was there, they had this Voice of Democracy. And this year, it was the VFW of Elk Grove that had this contest, and you had to write an essay. That was a big part of it, an essay. And the young lady wrote about the theme, "Is this the country the founders envisioned?" And she... I... Tom, you may know that you put this in the paper, and I've read what you've put about this, and this is why I want to mention to it, mention this, and give the girl the credit. She won the local award from our local VFW and is in the second... Has won the second stage of it as well. Her essay, beautiful essay, where she talks about the struggles that we've had in our country, but in the end, gives kind of a very positive viewpoint in answering that question, "Is this the country the founders envisioned?" Very impressive what this young lady did. And that concludes my report.
Thanks, trustee Fighter. Trustee Schmidt.
Just have one item to go tail on trustee Proctno's idea about keeping the sidewalks clean and driveways. Don't forget the fire hydrants. I was driving through downtown, I noticed a couple hydrants that had snow covered on them, and we haven't had a large amount of snow on the ground in a long time. And so, if you have a hydrant in front of your house, in the airhouse, take the few minutes to clean around it, just in case the fire department has to use it. And that concludes my report.
Great point. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee. Trustee Jeffrey Charles Flankie.
I'm going to piggyback on the piggyback. Not only did I shovel out my hydrant, but I also opened up around the sewer, because in case that... Because the curbs are, you know, you can't find them. If it does ever start to thaw, it'll start flooding the streets if you can't get to... So, if you have the sewer closed, you're out. Just try to dig that snow out and make it so the water will go down instead of flooding the street, so. Somebody want to piggyback on the money?
No, but there was another great point.
That's a good point.
Oh, I learned from you guys, that's why.
And what would really be a great point, if you shoveled my driveway at the same time, it'd be a win all the way around. It'd be a Festivus miracle.
I tried that last time, but you wanted me to shovel the snow off the driveway. I shoveled it down today.
Very good. Thank you, trustee Flankie. Move on now to county's payable warrant, first January 31st, 2021.
I move, we accept the county's payable warrant from January 31st, 2021, in the amount of $3,410,722.36.
Second.
Motion by trustee Zarnick, second by trustee Listener. Lori, will you call the roll, please?
Trustee Fighter?
Yes.
Trustee Flankie?
Aye.
Trustee Listener?
Aye.
Trustee Proctno?
Aye.
Trustee Schmidt?
Aye.
Trustee Zarnick?
Aye.
Motion passes six to nothing. Mr. Rome, January is 31 days. Just thought I'd point that out. Okay, the county's payable warrant for February 9th, 2021?
I move, we accept the county's payable warrant of February 29th, 2021, in the amount of $555,518.99.
Second.
Motion by trustee Zarnick, second by trustee Listener. Without objection, court votes previously demonstrated, six to nothing. Today, on the consign agenda, one big item we're passing is the thing with the Skybox for data center. Also, tonight's agenda, we are passing a recommendation from the Plan Commission for a hotel that's gonna go into an office building that was formerly there. So, that is good news, good use of the property, and we're excited about that. I need a motion?
Second.
Motion by trustee Flankie, second by trustee Listener. Any questions or comments? We have items A through K. A is an apple, K is the kite. Any questions, items? Anybody in the audience? If not, we record votes previously demonstrated, six to nothing. We move on now to... Share with me. Regular agenda, we have no items. Plan Commission, Mr. Rommel? It's come by you, trustee Flankie, be ready.
Oh, he's got the report. Uh-oh. Good evening, mayor and board of trustees. As the mayor indicated earlier, the village of Elk Grove has been petitioned by Baymont Inn and Suites to locate in a three-story office building on a 2.5 acre site at 2300 Higgins Road on the far east side of Elk Grove Village. Baymont Inn and Suites wants to convert that space into a 60-room hotel, both standard and suite rooms, and they would have a price, right? Understand, a price point of about $75 a room night during the wintertime and higher during the summertime. In order to make that conversion, it requires a public hearing before the Plan Commission and the issuance of a special use permit by the village board. So, the petitioner did go through the first phase of that, and they had the public hearing before the Plan Commission. Plan Commission accepted testimony and has made a recommendation to you in the form of a finding of fact to issue a special use permit to the Baymont Inn and Suites at that location, subject to final landscaping plan being approved by the Plan Commission at... Prior to occupancy, and 89 parking stalls being included on the site. If you find it acceptable, a motion to have the village attorney prepare the necessary documents would be in order, and I believe the petitioner is here this evening, should you have any questions of him.
Again, as I said earlier, this is great to see that kind of repurposing of an existing building and to reuse. That building was not very much used, and now it's being utilized, and everything's great. My only question is, Mr. Rommel, they had originally had 100 and some parking spots. Now, they went down to 89. What did the... What happened? What's gonna happen to the other land that's not gonna be parking spots?
I believe that's part of the landscaping plan, that the Plan Commission would like reworked.
So, they'll take... Because I know they gotta submit a new plan to the Plan Commission, update the landscaping plan. So, that won't be a parking lot, then it'll be torn up with landscaping on it.
That is my understanding, yes.
Okay. That's what I was wanting, because it's quite a few spots that's not gonna be utilized. I want to make sure this is not a vacant parking area. It's landscaping makes more sense.
It'd be a well landscaped and beautiful facility.
Perfect. Any questions or comments from any board members tonight? If not, I need a motion to have the attorney prepare necessary documents?
So, move.
Second.
We have a motion by trustee Listener, second by trustee Fighter. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye. Opposed?
That's what I showed you, that's full. You do not need to return next week, or next meeting in two weeks. It's gonna be a mere formality as we pass it. It was unanimously approved by the Plan Commission, unanimously approved tonight by the board. So, you can go ahead and get started, just work with Mary Jo's... Oh, okay. That's not Mary Jo. But work with the engineering department on getting your permits. We'll let you go ahead and get started when you ever want to, and we'll make the formal approval in two weeks. Again, you don't have to be here for that. We thank you for picking Elk Grove. We thank you for what you're doing over there, and we wish you nothing but the best of success. Thank you. Okay. Anything else, Mr. Rommel, the other item, not ready?
There are no other items under the Plan Commission nor the zoning board of appeals.
Thank you. This was, I think, the first time it came up during the pandemic.
Yeah, that scared me.
Yeah.
Tell them to go over there next time.
Poor Mr. Flankie got scared, but otherwise, we're good. No, I don't want to do that to George. That's why I...
Don't do it to me.
Yeah. George only has 49 months, so...
I know.
Actually, he'll feel like 46 soon, so it's no big deal. Okay, we move on to youth committee. Trustee Flankie.
Thank you. I just want to mention about the seven scholarships we have available through the youth committee and the Park District Foundation. So, please get your forms either online with the village or check with your school. You need to fill them out and have them back into us no later than May 7th. Seven $1,000 scholarships out there. Please don't wait till the last minute to get them in, so we can make sure that we have everything arranged and we can decide who the winners are. So, I'll be speaking about this probably until May, so good luck. That's it.
Thank you. We move on now to business leaders forums. Trustee Listener.
Thank you, mayor. There's always a lot going on at Enclave, and there's a new Makers' Wine at class for the year 2021 that's beginning this Thursday, February 11th. The class has 24 students from 20 different companies, which is much larger than the 2020 class. It's gonna meet on the second Thursday of each month from 8:15 in the morning to 1:15 in the afternoon, and the class is planning to meet in person now that the enclave... Or not the enclave, the pandemic seems to be making it possible. And they're also, if they're available, there will be a weekly class via Zoom, which will be on Thursday mornings from 8 to 9. This month's master class at Enclave will be this Wednesday, February 17th. Actually, it's next Wednesday, February 17th. The class will only be online, the time is from 6:00 PM to 7:15 PM. The presenter is Vic Pelacano, and the title of his presentation is Rethinking Sales for Manufacturing in 2021. If anyone's interested in seeing this presentation, please contact Josh Grozdin at jagrozdin@elk Grove dot org, or telephone Josh at 847-357-4005, and Josh will send you the link to the meeting. And that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, trustee Listener. Move on cable television committee, trustee Listener.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think you mentioned earlier that one of the questions that said at his coffee dealt with the Elk Grove TV schedule not being available in the Xfinity Program Guide that all the other channels are. The village has been trying for many, many years to get that listed, but still hasn't had any success. I just wanted to remind people that the schedule is printed... A schedule is printed every month and is available at the village hall and a few other public places around town, and also on elk Grove dot org. You just go to... When you go to Elk Grove, just go to the government section and follow your way through to Elk Grove TV, Channel 6, and a few other clicks and the schedules there. I've asked the Elk Grove TV team to look into a way of possibly putting the schedule on TV on their... On one of their programs. They have a daily program at 2 o'clock and 6 o'clock. It's called the Elk Grove Update slash Village News. And I thought if they could get away of just blowing up the program and make it where somebody could look at it for a few minutes each day and possibly see something like they want to see, like In the Grove or some other special show like that.
That's a pretty busy program. I mean...
Yeah, it is. But it's... Well, we'll see. If anyone could do it, they can do it. And if they can't, well, then no one could do it, but... And one last thing for Comcast subscribers, they might want to take a look at their monthly build. There's some channel updates being scheduled for February, March, and April, and probably the rest of the year. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee Listener. Move on now to community health and community services, trustee Zarnick.
No report.
Information committee, trustee Listener.
No report, but once again, I want to encourage everyone to continue to check the village website and Elk Grove TV for updates on what's happening in the village.
Thank you. Recycling waste committee, trustee Fighter.
No report.
Parade committee, on this beautiful, warm, sunny day that we had, trustee Zarnick.
Look forward to our hometown parade. It's scheduled for Saturday, September 18th, 2021, 2:00 PM. And the Community Character Coalition are the grand marshals for the parade, and we're very fortunate that this organization, that we have this organization working and represented... Representing the residents of Elk Grove. Our next parade meeting will be announced at a later date. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. We move on now to personnel committee, trustee Jeffrey Charles Flankie.
No report.
Judiciary planning and zoning committee, which has become very busy, trustee Proctno.
Busy, busy, busy. Yes, the JPZ committee met this afternoon to discuss the possibility of allowing the recreational sale of marijuana within our community. What spurred this was a referendum on our November ballot. I will read the referendum question. Shall the village authorize the sale of adult-use recreational cannabis, marijuana, within guidelines established by the state of Illinois and the village of Elk Grove? The result... The vote totals were yes, in favor of doing that, 10,262, which represented 63.4% of the vote, and no votes were 6,134, representing 36.6% of the vote. So, clearly, there was an indication that our residents would be interested in allowing this sale. So, we had our initial meeting with staff today of the JPZ committee, and they did a very nice job of putting together some possible draft dispensary regulations, things that we need to look at as far as the rules and regulations where this sale place could be located, and different locations, different rules. And it was just an initial meeting, but we had a lot of input. We're going to be meeting again in two weeks before the board meeting, once again around 3:30 in the afternoon. We don't have an exact time yet, but that will be announced, and we will be getting some more information from staff with possible information from the two sides representing, whether they support the sale of recreational marijuana and those that are against it, just to have some perspective of troubleshooting or any kind of situations that may... Other communities may have experienced in the past. We're not in a huge... We're taking our time to make sure we do this right, and what it will come down to when we're done with our usual JPZ meetings is they will... We will make a recommendation to the board, and we will have a committee of the whole meeting where all this information will be presented to the full board. As always, these meetings are all open to the public, so please call if you would like to attend, or if you have a... Or contact me or village hall if you have a question or a concern or something that you'd like to point out or share with me. But this is an ongoing issue. We are also going to be meeting at the next meeting for a few minutes to discuss the Airbnb rentals that we tackled two weeks ago. We still have a few more questions. Our village attorney is working on an ordinance, and we will be making a recommendation to the board probably after that meeting. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee Proctno. Capital improvements committee, trustee Zarnick.
Thank you. The capital improvements committee met on January 29th and reviewed the proposed 2021 street maintenance program. It was item F on our agenda tonight and was passed. It includes quite a bit. The proposed 2020 MFT program has an estimated cost of $1,414,885. And $85,000 was also reserved of the MFT funds for asphalt material purchase for roadway patching operations. The proposed 2021 business park program has an estimated cost of $1,531,349, and that's funded by the Business Leaders Forum and the Business Bussie Elmhurstif accounts. In addition, the 2021 MFT program, Arlington Heights Road from Newport Avenue to Brantwood Avenue, is proposed to be rehabilitated with letting later this fall. This project will provide vital infrastructure improvements to 1.4 mile stretch of roadway as well as provide a new bidirectional turn lane. In addition, the project will include pavement rehabilitation, curb removal and replacement and replacement and widening of the sidewalk from four to six feet on both sides of Arlington Heights Road. Also, ADA ramp and pedestrian signal improvements, median landscape and retaining wall enhancements, and Cook County is providing 4.4 million in funding. That covers approximately 80% of the cost. The proposed project will be completed utilizing the funds from the Capital Project Fund. Continuation of the pavement rejuvenation program in the amount of $230,000 is also proposed, which will include 9.8 miles of street resurfaced in 2020. That program will be utilizing funds from the general fund and the Business Leaders Forum. And that concludes my report. Lot of work being done.
Yes, thank you, and needed to be done. Airport update, there's nothing for this time. It's gonna take a little longer than we thought about getting the rotation fly quarry program set for the nighttime hours, but hopefully in March, we can finally get that wrapped up. Midsummer concert classic series, think about it, Mr. Knickerbocker. In just five months, it could be going on. Who are we gonna open with?
Daughtry.
Daughtry, very good. Next?
Casey and the Sunshine Band.
Casey and Sunshine Band, very good. Next?
Loverboy.
Loverboy. And we finish up with the iconic one?
It would be the Beach Boys.
The Beach Boys and Mike Love. So, excited about that. Hopefully, it'll be happening. Hopefully, we have Rotary Fest, hopefully we have Memorial Day, where we talk about special events. Community, that's the next thing coming up, will be Memorial Day.
I hope so.
Keep our fingers crossed. We gotta get back to normal. No report on our liquor commission? Report from village manager?
No report.
Report from village clerk?
No report.
Except early voting?
We do have early voting, beginning on March twenty-second through April fifth here at the village hall.
Very good. We're excited about that.
Hours will be posted on the website.
Very good. Uh, there's no contested election for board, village board, library board, or the park board, but the school boards do have contested election, and, um, quite a few people. So please, make sure you turn out. Your biggest tax, part of your tax bill, on your prop tax bill, which everyone just got, school districts account for sixty-seven percent of that bill. So this is your chance to get your voices heard, so make sure you get out and vote for that, even though there may not be another races. Mr. Knickerbocker, check on you. Anything?
No.
As usual. Um, okay? Any new business items, any board members want to bring up tonight?
Uh, I do, I do want to just add something to my JPZ report.
Sure.
Um, I mentioned that we are taking our time and being thorough in our investigation. I in no way want to, um, imply that we are holding anybody up. To this date, no one has come to the village, no businesses come to the village asking to open a dispensary. So we're not slowing anything down that gives us the time to investigate this and do it right.
Exactly right. No one's made a formal proposal to us at all, and it's been several years, so. Very good. Thank you. Public count, well, hey, Mr. Petzel again.
I know.
Has anybody?
He's been at coffee at Clara, I know that.
Okay, so, good, he's doing well.
Ellen, Ellen told me.
And Ellen, how we doing?
We're doing good. Center is open. Uh, still need to get the.
So the center is, the senior center is open? Okay. Have we sent my coffee in April yet?
No, we haven't, but we'll do it all day.
Okay, reach out to Lori and we'll get that. Very good. Um, okay, any other comments tonight, from anybody? I don't think all staff here. Jared, like I say, I hope you, I didn't do anything wrong. I didn't call you Mary Jo. I was looking, I wanna make sure, Jared, you're okay. Uh, okay, with that said, uh, we'll be back in two weeks on February twenty-third. I need a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second, second, second.
Chirping down the peanut gallery down there?
I don't know, can you hear me from down here?
It's hard to hear the children's table, we're trying. Yeah.